Hey, good evening, everyone. My name is Charles Davis. I'll be moderating tonight's Ethos Village Town Hall meeting, the latest in a great series that brings a lot of topics to the table to help us in our world with our families, with our friends, with our businesses, our lives overall. And tonight, we're going to be talking about the impact of social media on ourselves, on society as a whole, the whole deal. So let me introduce you to your panelists for tonight. First up is Ms. Tina Robertson, who is a proud graduate of an HBCU, Jarvis Christian, has a master's in social work from the University of Texas Arlington, home of the move in Mavs. She is also now the Director of Innovation and Impact at Momentus Institute in Dallas, Texas. Texas, and I love your kind of, I don't know if it's your mission statement, I don't know if it's your mantra, but when you say invest in relationships, they are the greatest gift and giving resource in the world. I'm gonna have to take that and start using that myself. Thank you, Ms. Robertson. So glad that you're here. Also with us tonight is Mr. Lorenzo Alexander, former NFL star, now I believe is back on campus at Cal, doing his thing as well. We appreciate him joining us, and he's one of the greatest minds I've met in this short time I've had here on earth. Mr. Everson Walls, former NFL All-Pro, also a member here and part of the reason that the Ethos Village came to fruition, and a huge supporter and participant with Ethos Village, and one of the guys that convinced me that my game wasn't tight enough to be in the NFL, so I got to go out and get a job. And of course, the man who runs Ethos Village, Mr. Michael Davis, another proud Cal graduate. And for those who may have been on before and may have heard this, the way that they have fun at Cal made me want to go back to school, except Cal rejected my application because they saw my grades. So other than that, we're good to go. But we're going to talk about social media, and that is one of the hot topics, hot button things that you're going to get in our society. I don't care how you discuss it, how you frame it. It's one of those things everyone has an opinion about, some of it positive, some of it negative, some of it in between, goes back and forth, depends on the day. If someone says something positive about you on social media, it's a wonderful thing. Someone says something negative about you, it's a cesspool. Let's try and analyze this a little bit. Ms. Robertson, I want to start with you. You work in the field of mental health. It's too broad of a question to say, hey, social media, mental health, but can you try and break down a little bit for us that there's got to be some good in it, which is why it was created, but how do we avoid the pitfalls of social media? And some people may not be kind of suited for social media being good for them.
Well, I was actually kind of hoping you didn't start with me because I really wanted to just lay the groundwork and say, I don't want to be Debbie Downer or Negative Nancy.
I don't want you to be that person. So I want to bring you back in.
Bring me back in because I'm going to talk about mental health, and that's going to sit on us a little bit. So let's get the frame of, hey, this is the great part, and then come back to Tina, and I'm going to be like, and this is what we got to pay attention to, y'all.
Okay, well, that's perfect because I got off of social media in August of 2020. I've never been happier. Everson Walls, tell me about social media and give me something good, please. And social media, as I understand it, is not just Twitter, right? It's not just TikTok, it's not just Instagram, Facebook, any of those things where you're getting messages out, right? You can do so many good things with it. Give me something good about social media, so we don't start with the Negative Nancy and the Debbie Downer.
I'm going to be very broad about it. I mean, this is social media, right?
Correct.
For having this is social media. So, you know, it's like anything else. You can find the good in it. You want to hear something good, that is something good. That social media has really elevated us from a social standpoint. Without social media, then we don't see some of the bad things that have brought about change here in our own communities, especially. I mean, without social media, you know, you don't necessarily have access to some of the information that may be really tough to get otherwise. I mean, I used to have encyclopedias, you know, I don't even know if anybody knows what Britannica is. I just know it's on my books. I read encyclopedias all the time. Now, social media can have it to where you can look that up as long as you go to the right source. So that's the good news. Now, if you want to talk about the bad news, then you come back and circle around with me again, just like that is the good news.
Well, we're going to circle, and since you brought the encyclopedias into, we'll talk about the Dewey Decimal System later on when we went to the live. Lorenzo Alexander, I'm going to you now, sir. You played in the NFL at a time where social media really burst onto the scene. You started to see all of that. Can you help us to with how you see social media? And probably let's start with the positives that you've seen.
Right, yeah. You know, I think I lie in the middle when I get down to the nitty gritty of it as far as what social media means, you know, positive or negative influence on your life. But I think it all begins with the type of framework that you approach it with and understanding what it's for, that it's ultimately a tool, and how do you engage it? And you have to be really careful and aware of how do you engage it? Because you can, to people's points, you can find yourself down several rabbit holes in a bad way, especially understanding that a lot of these algorithms are manipulating us anyway, right? But from a positive aspect, like for example, for my foundation, it allows me to engage the community easier, right? I don't have to send out emails and ask the media to cover me. I can go directly to the source, to the fan base, to the community, and really share my story and control my story the way I want to. You know, a lot of guys do that with their brand as well, as far as the type of images and the type of things as far as words of wisdom that I may put out to really just impact people in a positive way. But to your point, obviously, it's always negative, but to my thing is, especially when it comes to the mental health, and a lot of people listening to like the negative aspect of it, and this is hard, you have to have some maturity, right? Because a lot of us go to it for the social engagement aspect of it, but realizing, I think, to Mr. Wells's point, like what the source is, who is the source, where am I getting it from, right? And when I have negative comments or negative things coming at my way, does this person actually know me? Or do they know of me, right? And I think that's a big difference. And I think we allow people that know of us to have too much power over us. But again, it goes back to how we control that, how much we're on it, and then realizing that they don't really know us, they know of us, and trying to minimize that as much as possible is the key to find that balance in utilizing social media, in my perspective.
Michael Davis, you deal with a lot of youth in what you do there at Ethos Village. Is social media just the latest thing of when we used to pass notes in homeroom, you know? Do you like Michael? Check yes or no. You know, I'm being a little bit facetious here and a little tongue in cheek, but to me, the social media is just what we used to do in a whole lot of other ways. But for you as well, trying to reach these kids, you've got to be an expert on it, don't you?
Yeah, I think you guys kind of touched on it, but looking at it from the kid's point of view, it can be really, really dangerous from the aspect of creating an image that is not them. They want to live up to something that's not even close to being who they are as far as their identity. They start to compare themselves to something that's not really real. I think everybody, you know, I see the kids really posting things that are just the best of themselves or maybe kind of a little bit, you know, kind of out to the right, you know, not necessarily accurate, like I said, but they're trying to show the best of what they really want to be. And so you're here comparing yourself to this person who's not really who they say they are. And so you're in this place like, man, I can't win. And this person starts to really get down, and I'll leave it after Tina to kind of touch on the mental health perspective. But our kids really start to lose who they are, and again, it becomes the issue of grounding yourself and having some narrative about, you know, why are you using social media, what it's for, and then how it can actually hurt you. And so I think we spend a lot of time talking about, again, we talk about the legacy plan, identity, and who you are, and why you're here, your purpose, and being very careful, again, comparing yourself to the next person.
You know, Ms. Robertson, before you dive in with the, as you jokingly called it, the Negative Nancy and the Debbie Downer part, Everson Walls touched on how some of this social media has been really, really good for our society. It brought to light things that people didn't see before. I would say Rodney King, there's a video. If that hadn't been a video, we never would have had that part of the impact, right? If you talk about George Floyd, okay, and I'm not just going to tragedies now. There have been other things that we have seen throughout our society that we've been able to illuminate through this social media where it becomes a happening, a following, a gathering, and then all of a sudden, it's a movement, those sorts of things. And it happens at all levels. It happens young, you know, happens old, it happens, you know, in the world and all that. So I'm sure there's some positives you'll bring to it, but also I know you need to talk to us about the pitfalls that we need to be aware of as well.
Yeah, so the parts of this that I think, and I actually just want to say this, I was in the encyclopedia age too. I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing to have those around. Remember the salesman that used to come to the house?
Before you get to that salesman, every time I think about it, when we were a little bit younger, there was a movie called Foul Play with Chevy Chase and Goldie Hawn, and an encyclopedia salesman, who was a little person named Billy Barty, came to try and sell her encyclopedias, but she had been fed this information, beware of the dwarf, and she beat the heck out of that poor man when he tried to sell her some encyclopedia. So I always think about that with encyclopedia salespeople, but anyway, I digress.
I mean, you know, I can say, you know, we can keep some of the old while we talk about some of the new. You know, certainly, as you mentioned, and I think Walls and Lorenzo spoke to this as well, that there are some positives. So, you know, especially in the age when we have COVID, we're in COVID era, it gave us an opportunity to stay connected where we weren't able to do that and have face-to-face interactions. So, social connections, of course, is a big part of the positive part of using social media and having access to smartphones, which I'll talk about in a second. The other piece is, you know, students are able to use it for schoolwork. So there are groups that can form, like on Facebook, there are certain groups where kids get together and they talk about what's happening in class. Now, those are rare, but let me talk about the downside, because with everything that's a good, and I love the term tool because it is a tool, and really, when you drill down about social media, it's really about choices. At the end of the day, it's about choices. How much time am I going to spend on social media? Who am I going to follow? What do I do if somebody says something that I disagree with? So when you talk about this in relation to preteens and teens and talk about adolescents, that's a really challenging space for them because they're still developing in their brains. So adolescence is the second highest brain architecture time, second only to early childhood. So the brain is developing, and Mike talked about just identity with the legacy plan, and there are other parts of that plan that are so important for kids to plant down to as foundation. But when you think about just the visual of taking a child, preteen or a teen, put them in an auditorium by themselves, and then start bringing in hundreds of people, some that they may know, some that they may not know. All of these people are talking to them about their own experiences. They're influencing them in some way around content that that kid may or may not be familiar with. So you've got all of these different sources coming into this space of this kid to influence their ear gate and their eye gate, and to really honestly have impact on their mind and their development. And that's what happens with social media. It's like having a kid alone by themselves as they're using these platforms, having to make, in some sense, some really adult and mature decisions, and that can be a challenge for them. So I want to add this in real quick because this is some research that I think is important for us to know as we think about this on the mental health side. Some of the research says that on average, that kids are spending anywhere between two and a half, up to eight hours of waking day on social media platforms. So if you add that up for a week, that equates to almost two days of waking time, right? Because hopefully you're sleeping, but that's a whole other thing I want to get to in a second. So lest I get too long-winded, because I could talk about this forever, Dr. Jean Twenge, who I was fortunate enough to meet at a conference that my job hosted for Thought Leaders, she talks about this topic in particular. And what her research showed was that the higher the usage of social media, particularly as it relates to the access because of smartphones, the greater the potential is for mental health issues. And the biggest correlation in all of her research across adolescents and young adults, not just in the United States, but in several other countries, her research showed that there were higher incidences of loneliness. And loneliness is a risk factor that leads to other mental health issues like depression, anxiety, self-harming behaviors, and ultimately can lead to, without intervention, suicidal ideation and suicidal attempts, which is on the rise. So you might ask, how could you be lonely if you're using social media and connecting with people, right? Well, there's a difference in having an authentic connection. So we were designed to have these authentic connections, face-to-face, eye-to-eye. There's oxytocin that happens with touch, with us being proximate. And so just based upon the superficial, in some sense, relationships that happen over social media, loneliness is a big factor, and then also sleep deprivation. So I'll stop there with that. I'll probably share some more later, but that's enough for us to sit on and chew on for the Negative Nancy part of this conversation.
Okay, I've got nothing left after that. I mean, I'm done. You finished me off, Ms. Robertson. I got nothing. I'm just teasing. Appreciate you bringing up all of that. Let's go back. Lorenzo Alexander, you mentioned how the positives are in there, but let's talk about as a ball player, as an athlete, as a person, social media, there's some positives, but there are also things that, as you said, you have to control yourself because now everyone has an opinion and they don't mind sharing it with you.
Right. And I'll take that one step further because I'm also a father, right?
As a parent.
As a parent as well. And so actually, my kids don't have smartphones because of that reason. My wife has done a lot of research on that and really just validating everything we just heard about the impact it has on young kids and young people as far as their development and depression and suicidal effects. And obviously, as parents, they can be mad at me all they want for not having a phone, but obviously, the end game is going to be much better for them, and they'll appreciate it later. And actually, because we set that expectation, my oldest daughter, who is, that's still in the house, that is 13, she doesn't even really, she doesn't even want a phone. She doesn't ask us because we set that standard. And so she's happy, and to Mike's point, she's not constantly comparing herself. She's able to get away from it once she gets home, right? She's able to separate half some me time and really dwell with her family and brothers and that type of stuff, which is really healthy balance in life. And that's what it comes down to, even as a player, when you are engaging your fan base or engaging corporate America, is finding that balance of getting your message out there without creating a facade. And that was something that I was always intentional about, is trying to figure out, who am I? What messages do I want to put out there, making sure that it's one and the same? And so when somebody meets me, it's not like, oh, you like that? And so I had to be really intentional about that. And I had some good mentors in my life help me with that, identify those things, and really staying on point as far as the type of messaging that I want to put out there, what type of brands I want to partner with. And then also, from a player's perspective, after you play, everybody feels like they have access to you, right? And so I always think, and my wife is even better than this than I am, and she always makes sure that I don't tweet back, but essentially, you know, after a game, somebody will want to hit you up and like, hey, why'd you miss that tackle? Or, hey, you suck. And many of times, have I typed something, looked at it, like, do I want to put this out there right now while I'm upset, right? And so I've had to develop that, I guess, filter, like that cool-off period to where, again, this person doesn't know me, they don't know what I'm being coached, they're not in the NFL, they can't do what I do, right? And obviously, I'm mature enough to understand that, but I did have to have help with my wife to recognize that because earlier on, I would put some things out there that I would look back at, like, man, why did I say that? Or why did I do that? And she would bring it to my attention. So having that support group around me to kind of help me filter myself and understand what I needed to and not to engage really helped me as I matured as a professional athlete, you know, dealing in the social media world.
Michael and Everson, I'm going to have you guys in tandem. I'm going to start with you, Michael. Part of what Lorenzo's talking about is being that authentic self that you're trying to put out there, and you talked about it as well, but it's also very diff, it's also one of those things, isn't it a means to an end, especially nowadays? Like, if you're a big-time athlete, the NIL is now in play, name, image, likeness. And people are wanting to pay you money for who they think you are and what you're putting out there. I did a little bit of research on it. That thing first started, the first day, there are twin basketball players at Fresno State, right? The twins, and I can't remember their names off the top of my head.
They got a ton of followers.
Yes, their followers on TikTok and everything were over 3 million to begin with, which is why they were attractive to companies. I've seen that in this, we're coming up on the one-year anniversary of it. They say that those two are going to clear a million dollars this year. Now, others are clearing more than that. I'm just saying, these are two women basketball players that figured it out. They weren't sure name, image, likeness was coming in, but they were establishing themselves as their image.
Right.
That really, I mean, how do you talk to your kids about something like that?
I think it goes back to, again, just understanding who you are and just really being very authentic, like Zoe was talking about, you know, and just being very understandable to what that message is going to be. Understand that you can make money. You can, you know, get out there, get the followers, but what type of followers do you want at the end of the day? And I think it can actually hurt you and also obviously make money, but it can also harm you in that respect. So then you have to go back and you have to build into a facade that you put out there that people are expecting to see every day. Anyway, you don't get that, it may be disappointing. They may be like, wait a minute, that's not who I saw you on TikTok to be. What's really going on? And then you have to battle that piece of it to say, well, man, what do I do now? I'm at this crossroads. And I think whatever the message is, you really have to be true to yourself at the end of the day because, you know, you have to be in a position that you know you love yourself. And I think these opinions, like Zoe was talking about, everybody else talked about, can really go to a point of making you feel depressed, can really start to question, again, what direction you want to go as being a young man or a young woman. So the NIA, NIL, excuse me, I think is something that is, you know, obviously, they talk about it, but again, what is it that is true to your brand? Understand what your brand is first and foremost, having a clear distinction of what that is, and not, you know, really selling that short, and just being very comfortable and confident in that space. So I see it that way from that perspective. One thing I tell kids also, because I think, somebody spoke on this earlier, that I feel like the powers that be make this the situation where a country is already, you know, polarizing different issues. Either you're vaccinated or not, either you're Republican or Democrat, either you're black or you're white. There's always something that's pulling you left and right, and what side do you have to jump on? So again, I think you always have to find that balance in the space that you're comfortable with when it's all said and done. I was just going to say, I look at it as those are exceptions, okay? I mean, that's great that the twins got what they got and...
The Cavender Twins, I want to make sure I give them their proper...
That's great that they've gotten that, but you know, when it comes down to it, your kids, and especially yourself, you have to have realistic expectations. I mean, let's be real, I wouldn't be foolish enough, whether I was a kid or not, to think that, okay, I'm going to go out there and get $2 million because that's, you know, I'm twice as good as them or something. You can have those goals, and you can have that type of confidence for yourself. That is great. But when it comes down to it, you have to understand that moderation is the key for everything. With my kids themselves, I forgot some of the things I used to do to them, but just to make sure they stayed grounded. They have cousins, they all come over. You know, my kids were a little bit overweight, so, you know, before we're going to get out here and start playing in the pool, not being productive, I make them do 10 laps first. You know, we're doing 10 laps before you get in there and start having fun because you're going to be in the pool all day. So my thing was about being responsible, it was about being careful, it was about being moderate, it was about being realistic as well. I'm not going to sit here and say that I can go down, like Zoe was talking about, going down that rabbit hole. One kid, I don't know who it was, could be a grown man, he criticized my game. I don't think he can play anymore and he's criticizing my game. And he goes, you weren't ever the best. And you know, I had never answered anyone personally. I said, well, you're talking a little trash. I said, you must have read my resume, right? That was nice and funny and slick. He comes back emphatic, his words were all caps and grabbing, and it was exclamation points. And so immediately, I said, okay, that is not a place I want to go, just like Zoe was talking about. That's not a place I want to go. So it's like anything else, you have to use, excuse me, you have to use your own common sense when it comes to the media. You have to use your own common sense, no matter what media is out there that may criticize you or talk about you. Because as Mike said, you better be comfortable within your own self because you cannot compare yourself to all these great stories that are out there. If you do want to compare yourself to great stories, then be inspired by them. Don't be intimidated by them. Don't let them direct you in a negative way. There are so many different things on the internet where you can say, wow, this young man just went out there and helped a family. This young guy went out there and he helped some homeless people. It's a whole bunch of opportunities out there where you can say, you know what, that negative stuff is a distraction. This is how I can really use social media. Now, I can enhance myself because now I know more because I see more. To me, it's just a matter of how you want to look at it.
I like that. Ms. Robertson, I'm going to come back to you because a lot of times I feel like people utilize social media to be heard. Now, whether that's a positive or a negative, like the person engaging Everson, they just want to be heard and they want to be recognized. And as soon as you recognize them, it's a big day, right? When they come at you negative, you have sometimes made their day, and sometimes that's not even what it's really about for them. I'm just trying to figure out what are all the goods that come out of it? Because I don't want to be the one that just sits here and says, this is just, ah, this is terrible, because there's a lot of good in it. I want to suss that out.
Yeah. No, and I think it's important to elevate that. And so, you know, Mike talked about this, and he should because the legacy plan is a big part of the programming for ethos, and it's critical. I think one of the things that I, what I do in therapy when I have clients and I see adolescents and adults, one of the core things that we focus on is coming back to some anchors. Because you have to have something to anchor yourself to when life hits you from different places. And so we anchor into things like purpose, and what are your core values? Because you're letting these decisions that you make and the issues you're dealing with in life bump up against those things. How does that, what you want to accomplish in life, what your purpose is, how does this tool help you get there? How does this tool that you use in social media, what does that look like based upon your core values? If you value integrity, what does it look like by who you follow? And how you're going to respond to media questions that come to you afterwards? So it's being able to anchor people in those foundational pieces so that when the winds and the rains of storms in life happen, that they can have a firm foundation and be able to rise above it. But we've got to teach kids, we've got to give them some alternatives, and we've got to give them a way to use social media. So one of the things that I would say just as a strategy is that we need to have some awareness around this conversation in schools. We need to talk about it more within athletics, we need to talk about it in schools, just like we have safe sex campaigns and campaigns around drugs, and we talk about the pitfalls. We talk about what you do as opposed to what not to do. We need to have some campaigns around this conversation with social media because we're losing kids to it, we're losing their minds to it, and so it's not as simple as it is for us as adults. We really have to teach kids skills, and we have to anchor them into those core pillars that Ethos promotes through the Legacy Plan. I think that's a great way to get that part started toward mental health.
Do you have 10 o'clock tomorrow available for me to come in and spend some time with? Have that slot open, but real quick...
You come out, we go to work too. I got to work for you.
I appreciate it. Real quick, before I get back to the other guys, can you give us a story, a positive story where social media helps someone that you've been working with or brought them, you know, to a better place, or they were able to connect with someone that could help, you know what I'm saying? As opposed to just, because I know that I tend to skew negative towards it. I know that. I know there's good in it, and I want to make sure that that's not all I'm giving off myself. I know that. I know there's good in it and I want to make sure that that's not all I'm, I'm giving off myself.
Yeah, I mean, so, um, one person in particular is an adolescent that I've worked with in the past, who actually, because of something that they went through, they decided that they want, wanted to bring focus to a particular topic of area of struggle that they had in their family. And so they've used their social media to tweet out and on Instagram to talk about that particular issue. And so we've had conversation about what that's been like, what that's like for their family, the influences that they've been able to have on their peers. So it's, you know, taking those situations, looking for opportunities to say, how can I use this platform, as somebody mentioned earlier, um, in, on the panel, to really be an advocate for a cause? How can I use this to promote my purpose? Um, and I think that is a, a unique opportunity for all of us who work with kids to always put the positive spin on it to say, how might this help you toward your vision and goals? How might this assist you in really crafting your core values? And what does that look like this, based upon your core values? How do you want people to remember you as part of your legacy? And how can you use social media to really help you promote that? So that's how I would steward that conversation and I've seen that happen in the past. And it's been good to see some teens use it in that way.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Mr. Lorenzo Alexander, you mentioned your foundation and your utilization of social media to get your message out to them. Are there times when it's just like, like we're talking right now? You're looking at that camera and you're looking directly at the people giving your message and kind of cutting out all the middle people.
Right.
I'm guessing you found that to be a positive way to, to get to people, they get to see you, right? And that's, and, and you're presenting an authentic front.
Right, it's a great way just to, to connect with people directly. Um, you know, with some of the, 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 I guess, the, the features on some of the apps, whether it's, it's live or, you know, people can jump in and really talk to you and have an authentic conversation and kind of get to meet you, talk to, talk to them and really engage. And so that's always been fun, right? Because when you build that relationship, it builds that connection. And then a lot of people actually have come out and volunteered off of some of those things that I've been able to put out there. So it's, it's definitely been beneficial, um, in that way. Personally, um, I have gotten away from, at least recently, from posting, like I was doing workout videos and things of that nature, because I still try to stay fit. But I found myself trying to keep up the Jones and posting just to post. So even for me as an adult, I had to get back to it. I actually stopped posting stuff to understand, hey, I'm doing this for myself. And I know a lot of the, uh, some of the stuff like Instagram, I think even Twitter may have this, we can like even turn off comments, right? So I can put something out there, I'm not looking for nobody to get anything back, this is really just for me, therapeutic, or I'm not gonna post at all. And so I've had to engage, which has been really good, but also be aware of. Because once you start engaging something more frequently, it kind of pulls you in and it, and it's real subtle, right? And so that anchor point, um, you can kind of drift. But luckily I have some good, strong anchors that once I start drifting, oh, no, let me get back to where I want to be at and kind of refocus and reframe it. Um, so it's been positive, I built some anchors in my life to allow me not to get too far away from it. So I always stay on, on my purpose and the plan of who I want to be and what I really want the message to be going out to people.
Mr. Everson Walls, I have to ask this question because you're one of the most giving people I've ever met. And you've given in ways that I think most people would have a hard time even understand that someone could give that much of themselves to other people. But as a person who's come up through the ranks, as a ball player, as a person, as, as a family member, as a business person and all of that, you have all these different places that you have connections. In the old days, we wrote letters and notes to each other, right? Then we got to the point now, right, we can send texts to each other and all that other stuff. Now you have the thing like Facebook where you can find people from, man, whatever happened to that cat? And look him up and find it from 25 years ago. Have you found any of those tools to be beneficial in keeping up relationships or reestablishing relationships that may have been lost during time?
You know, that's so funny you mentioned that, uh, especially, uh, pre-vaccine. Uh, man, it was kind of lonely in here, right? I mean, I'm still with my family, but, you know, we kind of all, just to stay sane, we retreat to our own different corners. You know, just, just to, to tolerate each other. And I recall at one point, I was calling people that I hadn't called in a long time.
Yeah.
I, 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 I reached out to them, uh, people within the, just any organization, Cowboys organization, going back to Grambling State, some of my people there, uh, former players, former teammates that I was, uh, had been talking to. Uh, not to mention, you know, Mike and I always stayed on top of things with each other, but, uh, it gave me a chance, it really did. Uh, that, that these tools gave me a chance to be very productive during those first really gloomy days of the pandemic. So yeah, that was, uh, much appreciated by those that I called. Uh, I might not ever talk to them again, but, uh, that was one moment that, uh, that we both took advantage of, whoever I called. And it all turned out to be very good. I don't have to hear from them ever again, but just know that I talked to them that one time and it was a quality conversation.
Yeah.
Factions. And to be able to do that, you know, with, with just us FaceTiming, I, I FaceTime a few people. It was really something that was, uh, it, it uplifted my spirits as much as it did theirs.
Yeah, I know there had to be some special moments. Michael Davis, could Ethos Village had survived this pandemic minus social media?
Uh, not at all. I think social media, going back to your point, we use it as a huge tool, uh, to connect with kids and create a safe place. Um, so we, we talk about negativity, but you actually can create a safe place for kids to learn, to trust, to talk, uh, get things off their mind, they're depressed, uh, to again, learn about those value systems, those anchors that we're talking about. What is your anchor? How do you stay focused in that space? Um, uh, how do you have a, a healthy conversation? Um, you know, really just kind of pouring into yourself. And I think a lot of times, social media, like Tina talked about, you're in this room, we get all these strangers and they're talking to you. So you're scared to open up, you're scared to have a conversation. Where can I go find the right information? Uh, and I think the village's allowed us to do that as a community. Uh, allow moms to talk to moms and dads to talk to dads and kids to talk to kids and mentors. Um, and so that was what we kind of hung our hat on, uh, during this process. And so.
Yep, it's being humble. I'm gonna bury the lead for you, okay? Mike called more than a few students personally during the pandemic while they were having a tough time. And as we came out of it, I met a couple of those kids and he had me take pictures with him and everything. But I'm sitting up here soaking up all the glory on some of the work that he had really done. So, uh, we had talked about it, he knows how I felt about how important that was, but he's just being a little humble right now. But he clearly made, he clearly made use of that. And because of that, you have some parents that are extremely grateful to him because of that.
Yeah, and I'm not surprised by that at all. And I'm guessing that it wasn't just phone calls, I'm sure there was plenty, a plenty of opportunities like we're having right now. They, they needed to see you guys, right? They needed to see you, Michael, they needed to see you, Everson. That's a big deal for these kids. And that's how this social media and this thing that we talked about at the beginning, that had to be a major league positive.
It, it absolutely was. And it allowed them to really, you know, validate who they are when it was all said and done. And, and didn't need to have validation outside the village. It just got back to that concept of what the village really is. It takes all of us to pour into our kids, uh, in a healthy way. But also we talk about the negatives, it can be also be a negative, but we chose it to be a positive. That was what we wanted to be intentional about and having a positive message. So everything that we do on social media, we think it through, we have a campaign and it speaks to positivity. We think of the theme that we're gonna go ahead and talk about, uh, and it's always uplifting, uh, to our group. And that's who we are and we're gonna stay true to that.
You know, Ms. Robertson, I, Tina, I've got to come back to you because I know we're having a good conversation here, I can feel it, right? But at the same time, I may not be the best moderator in the world, so I need to ask you point blank, what are we not talking about right now that we should be talking about? In terms of this realm?
You know, I, I, I love how we have outlined the positives. And, and one of the things that I want to zero in real quick before I answer that is the word that Mike used, which is safe space. And so that's so important. That's what organizations like Ethos can do. That's what, um, you know, parents can do, that's what any adult professional that's working with kids can create those spaces so that they have places that they know they can go to, that have authentic connection, where they can belong. And it's not this superficial connection that they're having elsewhere, but that this platform can be used to build safety, belonging and support. So I want to say that first. The, the second thing that I want to say as to what we can add to the conversation is, what can people do about this use? So, um, Lorenzo mentioned, uh, smartphones and how his kids don't have them. And so that is one, one way to, to address this issue with social media. Um, I will also offer a couple of things. So, so one, I would say this is that as adults, I think we have to be better role models, um, as well as it comes to social media use. When you see adults using social media in an irresponsible way, it's hard for kids to learn how to use it. Um, I know of a situation right now happening on Facebook where there is an elected official and someone else who are having a back and forth on social media. It's really messy and their kids are involved in that as well. So, you know, what do we say to kids when they see that happening? How do we, how do we instruct them how to use social media in a positive way? So we've got to be better role models. I think the other thing too is just, there are some practical tips. I think that if parents are listening or anybody who's working with kids, one of the things that we can do to really kind of address some of the constant, um, barrage of what's coming to them. So one of the things we can do is turn off notifications. It's something really simple to do. If you've got your phone, just turn your notifications off so that you're not having that thing, that being, that buzz all day long that's drawing your attention because it, I, I, somebody said earlier, just that it creates this need to have to constantly be connected to your phone. So that's one thing we can do. We can also set time limits within our homes, uh, within our, our team aspect. So I know one family who actually has a check-in time at night. Everybody brings their phones and they put them in a basket and they have a, a cutoff time and the adults do that as well. So just practical strategies like that, that help kids not be on the phone all night long. It also gives the parents a break. So it's little things like that that we can do. And I think just talking about what are the ways that we can regulate and manage some of the usage? So we can support kids in becoming healthier, uh, in their use with social media.
Lorenzo, real quick, I'd heard, I, I'm hearing more and more from coaches in the NFL, college, the whole deal. The meetings don't last quite as long because guys have to wait from their phones, that they actually deliberately schedule them for like 25 minutes, give them a break. Back in the old days, it was a smoke break, right?
Right, right.
Phone break. Were you part of that? Did you see that starting to happen before you got out of the league as a player?
Not, not in particular with the team that I was on. Um, we scheduled meetings and had breaks just to make sure that guys would stay engaged, right? Kind of like almost that old Sesame Street routine, right? Where you have a commercial, like length, a meeting that people are gonna be engaged. Because if you have a two hour meeting, even the pro of pros is gonna be in the back sleeping, right? So it was more about how can we be most effective, keeping guys' attention, giving them the information they need, but not overwhelming or boring them by keeping them in this room for so long. And so we would meet, get up, it wasn't for phones, but obviously a lot of the young guys would go jump on their phones or text their Instagram or see their Instagram or whatever. Guy like me, I'm going to grab another cup of joe, go, you know, do what I need to do and I'm coming back in there. So it was just obviously from a cultural standpoint, it was different what I did in my break. But that's what the reason why the break was put in place, just because people's attention span is only so long. And so it was just a good way to kind of break up the meetings, the day, um, so you wasn't in there for too long. But yeah, like the Arizona Cardinals, I know they call them phone breaks. You know, that's what Cliff Kingsbury calls it, kind of trying to appease to the, the, the younger generation, which again, I think there needs to be some, some balance in that. I would necessarily wouldn't call it a phone break, right? Because in that break, you can go do something that was more productive than jump on your phone. But if you call it a phone break, that's what guys are gonna go do, right? Um, so I think just framing it a different way would definitely help guys not necessarily go jump on their phones. Maybe they go get a little bit of treatment, go grab something to eat or something else that's a little bit better served in that, you know, 15 minute break that you may get.
Michael, is that a battle for you at Ethos Village in terms of keeping the attention span? I mean, attention span is hard for teenagers anyway. But nowadays, when they want to get to the social media, is it even a bigger battle and how do you combat it?
Oh, it's, it's. Man, it's a huge battle. I'm over here doing workshops and we had the laptops out, right? That's part of our, our deal with our, uh, virtual portals. You know, they'll flip on ESPN real quick or go to IG real quick and then the, the, go back to Ethos Village and then click back to, uh, ESPN, go back to the village. So it's a constant battle, trying to keep them focused. Uh, but you know, that's just part of the age story.
Videos, Mike, and they, they saw the catch. And they said, bad, they talked about me bad this afternoon.
Oh, man, yeah, yeah.
Catch, did the catch come up?
Yeah, they, they Google me, man, they Google me, they saw the catch.
Tell them the story, tell them the story.
Bad optics, bro. No, I, I just tell them, you know, that's part of my journey, you know? My rookie year, it happened and, uh, you know, with the Super Bowl, I was able to, to, you know, uh, uh, a balance to the scale, so to speak. And of course, they don't want to hear about the balance of the scale, they're gonna go to the negative. And the guys, the kid, he's one of the, the big mouth kids in there, very confident, he's really one of our silent leaders. He doesn't realize what a leader he is.
Right.
Just kind of turns the computer around and like, this is bad optics, bro. Yeah, they, they, they got me good.
Everson, they didn't Google the 11 interceptions?
No, they don't want to hear that. That's what we have to deal with on social media, right?
Right, right.
Which is true. So I, I want to go around here because we're, we're, we're running out of time here, we're, we're running down. Tina Robertson, I'm one of those people that, for me, social media, and look, let's, let's be honest about it, Everson pointed it out, social media is what we're doing right now. So it's not like I don't do it, but I'm pretty deliberate that I finally got off of Twitter in August of 2020. I've never been on Instagram, I've never been on Facebook, I've never done TikTok, I don't do any of that stuff. But that's not to say I don't still consume it because people still send me things, right? There are things in articles that you're reading that you punch up, that you'll, you'll see the videos and things of that nature. So how do I best utilize it and not fall behind the information that comes our way constantly? Every second that can get updated by social media? Where maybe I'm learning about something that happened six hours ago, because I'm not on it with everyone else.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a question that probably most of us are wondering, like, how much and what's too much? It's really just around your comfort level of regulating what it is that you want to know. I could say, we could constantly be on social media, there are stories that are breaking all the time. But what's interesting is, is that a lot of those stories are being told over and over again all day long. So really, once you've taken in an hour or so of social media, you pretty much have everything that's probably going to be talked about for the next day or two. Um, and there are other ways to get information. And so, um, you know, looking at other sources of getting your information. I get news notifications on my phone as opposed to going to social media for that. So I have a Newsweek that pops up. And so I can get information that way, read it and be done with it. Kind of like the old days when we had newspapers and stuff like that, where we got information. It's really not healthy to be in touch with news all day long, every day. Um, that can have a significant impact on some, on us as well. So I would say, regulate it based upon your comfort level, but know that the more that we are watching that and pouring that into our lives and our systems, the more that we're getting connected to things that can really impact our overall health. And that's what we really want to focus on is what's best for my health and what's best for what I'm trying to accomplish by way of my purpose and what I want to do in this life.
Love that. Michael Davis, take us out of here with something really, really good about social media, your thoughts, all those things.
Uh, just really, you guys all hit about it, you know, it's just, it's balance, you know, just, just really finding your balance in social media and then making again, that choice of how you're gonna use it as a tool. Balance in the choice. And I think those are the two pieces that I would take away with this, you know, just to preserve your mental health, uh, for you to be happy, right? And, and, and not compete with others. Uh, understanding and finding those, those anchors, uh, when you do get sway left and right, you know, what's going to anchor you, uh, in this place where you have, you know, your value system? Because it's going to be tested, your identity is going to be tested. Things, uh, social media is going to bring things out where you say, well, am I really who I'm supposed to be? Or am I supposed to be at, at a certain place at this point in my life or whatever may be? But if you're grounded, understanding where you are, those things will not rock your ship. Uh, you're fine in the shoreline, so to speak, uh, and, and not get lost in sea, uh, with social media. So I, I, I think those are the elements that I would take away is really finding your balance in this place, which is sometimes hard, not finding a safe place. Uh, again, choices, the choice to use your tool, I think Zo brought that up. Um, and, and again, just understanding, where's my safe place? Uh, where's my village? Uh, and you can find it. And once you find it, I think that's where you, again, you can build your value system, build your identity, uh, and build those anchors that's going to solidify, again, your greatness in this place, uh, called social media, so.
Everson Walls, please follow. Everson Walls, please follow.
Hey, I'm 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 with all you guys. Uh you know, you just have to deal with social media in a proper manner. Uh like I said, the way I uh tried to raise my kids, uh I just want to make sure they had a balance of both. I like I I love social media. When I look at it, right, it has inspired me. Uh it has answered many questions for me. Yeah, like I said, it has pushed us along socially. Uh and at the same time, it has divided us more than ever. It's almost seemed like since the 60s. And so those are things you have to be aware of. But you know, to me, the balance, the yin and the yang, brother. The yin and the yang is so important. You have to have that balance because it's okay to be mad sometimes. It's okay to be outraged because there are things out there, the social media, that is outrageous. But then you also have to, like y'all said, bring it back, all right? Go back to your anchor, find that shoreline. Because I found myself getting up some mornings and I'm, it's noon by the time I take my eye off the doggone phone. So those are the things you have to be aware of. And I call myself being a mature person. So you can imagine what a younger person might uh, how he might be inflicted with that.
Lorenzo Alexander, and you're a public figure as well. There also, there's also that aspect, isn't there? I'm sure there have been plenty of times where you punched up your social media and found out, oh yeah, I saw Lorenzo such and such. I saw him here. So and you have no idea that they even saw you or whatever, right?
Right. And I think that goes to, you know, um how you carry yourself, right? Um your integrity, your character, because somebody's always watching um from that aspect as far as uh being able to put you on blast or, you know, use social media in a negative way uh just to impact your life, which we've seen um with other athletes. Uh and it goes back to what everybody's talking about, you know, having a true representation of who you are on and off the field, right? You want to have continuity in all those spaces of your life. Um because it's just too much work to put up facades. Uh it takes way too much energy. Mentally, it's really draining. And so you want to develop uh the true authentic self in whatever you're doing. And I guess one of the biggest things, don't, don't leave your greatness with your sport, right? Because a lot of you guys are student athletes. All of us are accountable on the field, right? We're going to grind in that process. We're going to have great accountability. We're going to try to be a great teammate. We're going to try to do all those necessary things to be, to develop ourselves athletically. Let's take that to the social media aspect too, right? Have accountability, have integrity, right? Have a social group that's around that they can hold you accountable, teammates. Allow people to speak into your lives. I think we have to u utilize all the resources that we have, whether we talk about academics or sports, also in our personal lives, especially social media and anything that we ever do. But I think too often, you know, I've done this too, we kind of leave that in that that one area, right? That those resources in that one area. So allow that to, don't uh compartmentalize your greatness or your resources or the people around you. Use them in every aspect of your life in order for you to be able to walk through these different spaces as best as we can.
Final notes, Ms. Tina Robertson. Anything for us as we as we step away?
I think you all said it well. The balance and the choices is what it comes down to. And that helps us with our mental health ultimately. So I appreciate the opportunity to share in this panel.
Well, thank you all. I appreciate you all sharing. Um Ms. Robertson, I'll see you tomorrow morning at 10 for my first session. First, it would be the first of many. And uh please have the couch ready for me because I'm gonna need. But I want to thank all of you. Lorenzo Alexander, Everson Walls, Michael Davis, Tina Robertson, all of you who are watching us and 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 listening today. I hope that you got something out of it because I know I certainly did. And we'll see you for the next town hall meeting and whatever timeframe that is scheduled. Usually we're about a month, somewhere in that neighborhood, somewhere from that, Michael Davis.
Yes, sir.
Much. And one that, one takeaway from me is, let's always remember, there's positive negatives to everything. How are we going to use it? And I think this panel said it perfectly. Find your balance, find your anchors. Thank you all very much.